Call meeting to order.
Oh, yes, that is there.
A comment or flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brett?
Play with me. Father, we thank you for all of your blessings. Help us not to take good opportunities, good people, our children, our beliefs in our environment for granted, who must be cognizant of your guidance and your blessings. In the midst of the pandemic, rearing its ugly head again, please help those who are suffering and those who care for the suffering. Help us all to be strong. We want to thank our men and women of the armed forces for protecting us and protecting our freedoms. Thank them for their service at every opportunity. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Rowland.
Present.
Mrs. Truitt.
Present.
Mrs. Zimmershey.
Here.
Okay, any public comment this evening? Nope. Okay, report with potential board discussion, the dropout report from Ms. Hopkins.
Good evening. I am here, I'm Dr. Delana Hawkins, Associate Director of Secondary Curriculum and TLE, and I'm here to report for you the dropout comparison. The Oklahoma State Department of Education has not released a certified dropout report since 2018, so tonight's presentation includes 2019 and 2020. We had 27 total in those two years, from sixth grade to 12th grade. There was a change in the district-to-state reporting process just recently, in the last six months. So we have adjusted our practices at the sites to accommodate the new practices of the state, which includes more specified signed documents that are uploaded into our student information system or Power School. Any questions?
You might talk about why it's higher.
Okay, well, this report includes, with 2019, as you see, it is low or average. But with 2020, you can see Pohai specifically goes up some. That includes the March closure through to the next year. So when we had that closure and then the students not returning, there were quite a few that increased due to COVID with virtual school or online programs with K-12 and Epic. And there were some that are just now returning to us, that have been at home or quarantined with the pandemic, or not quarantined like we put them there, but with their family not attending school.
So if we had them before closure, they were counted toward us if they moved to Epic or if we couldn't find them and they dropped out, not necessarily Epic, another.
And out-of-state records, that's part of that change in process with the state's reporting process. Out-of-state, it gets, within state, we have a statewide record system that's fairly easy to find, where a student may leave us and go to another school site. But if the student or their family move out of state, it becomes very difficult. Our statewide system doesn't expand there. So we may or may not find or be requested for records of that school site for that student. So it doesn't necessarily mean they aren't attending school anywhere, but it may mean that they moved to Washington State or California. And we don't have those physical documents in our system, so they stayed on our dropout report.
And didn't you mention at the curriculum meeting that the procedures would change from here on out?
Yes, yes ma'am. We have adjusted. And now we have, as a part of our process, if a student is leaving our district to withdraw, there's a form that they'll fill out in the office of that site, and then it will be scanned and uploaded into Power School, which will meet the state's new requirements.
So the kids that stayed at home and did their own quarantine, what happens, do they have to go back, just like normal, they failed that class and go back? Or due to COVID, is it any different?
Well, it's the law that you have to be compulsory education act, that you have to be enrolled in school. So they were either with us, PCVA, or with a virtual charter or a virtual public school, or they did not go to school.
And then so they'll go back to the grade before?
Yes, stay the same. And a lot of schools were searching for students. I mean, it was hard, you know, trying to make sure they were somewhere, some we just couldn't find.
So of the 23, do you have a feel for how many were really true dropouts?
In 2020?
Yes.
I do. That also includes GED. And we had quite a high number. I think four to six were students that left high school and went to the GED program. And whether they receive their, they earn their GED or they don't, they stay on our dropout report, according to this process. I would say less than five, or maybe even less than three, are actual dropouts.
So the chart's really kind of confusing, that it shows a way higher number than reality really is there.
Yes, thanks to COVID.
Yeah.
That's another unintended consequence.
Wow. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the superintendent's report with potential board discussion, and we have the return to learn plan, the SDE emergency rules, and staffing updates.
Okay, this is pretty lengthy, but last time we reviewed the return to learn plan, so I am going to be very purposeful and not read this word for word to you. I did get some information from the Oklahoma State Department of Health today. No matter what level we're in, there are five key prevention strategies. We have to use masks correctly if the governor declares a state of emergency or if recommended by K County Health Department. We have to physical distance as much as possible, either by grouping or cohorting. And as you know, there are some situations in which we can't physically distance, but we will do our best.
Kelly?
Yes?
Does KC HD override the governor?
They will not. I've already spoken with her about that.
What I figured.
But if, I said, so what are you going to do? If we have spread within the district, she will make that recommendation.
But she can't make it if the governor says, you're not going to do it.
If we're having spread within the district, she can. But you know, last year, even when we were at 141 with our COVID alert system, we could pretty much prove there was no spread within the district. Of course, we were really aggressive with our contact tracing. Another focus has to be hand washing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining facilities, and contact tracing in combination with cooperation with the K County Health Department on isolations and quarantine. We can't issue those isolations and quarantine, but we do our own contact tracing, and we work with them. So we will use those five key prevention strategies, no matter what level we're in. And currently, we are at 3.0. It's the highest we've been since the summer. And you've probably heard on the news that the Delta variant is making its way in northeastern Oklahoma. And we've had a couple of cases from church camps that we've heard about. So that's where we are there. It is our full intention to be in school five days a week. There's not going to be any virtual days. There's not going to be an A-B schedule. That's required to be in our plan, because the federal government requires that. And you know, I think all schools in Oklahoma will be going to the five-days-a-week plan. This is a big topic, mask. Now, unless the governor declares a state of emergency or if the K County Health Department determines in-school spread, we cannot have a mask mandate. And that became effective July 1. This is from Oklahoma Senate Bill 658. And so we have not had a mask mandate, and we're at 3.0. So I don't imagine one will come. Now, this has been a big topic. By federal order, masks are required on all public transportation networks. And according to the COVID protocol, all public transportation is anything that is not your own private vehicle. So there's been a lot of discussion on that. Do we wear masks on buses or not? And I got word last week from Pam Dearing, the Executive Director of COSA, who is in Washington DC at a federal meeting, that that is correct. Now, that date stands as of this 10 seconds. Who knows if the date will change? But right now, it's through September 13, 2021, which is well after school starts. Something that's required in our plan is we have to say that masks must be fitted properly if the governor declares a state of emergency or on-school vehicles, and I won't read that to you. No gaps, must fully cover the mouth. We have to have in our plan mask accommodations and exemptions in the event of a mask mandate. And I will let you read those. I talked to you about them last month. Like if a student has an impairment, that would be detrimental for them to wear a mask. If they can't remove a mask on their own, a face shield may be appropriate. If they're receiving services where they use the shape of the mouth, like speech services, then they can wear a clear shield or a clear mask. That's required in the plan. Now, this is pretty lengthy, and these are the safety protocols that I talked to you about in committee meetings. I made you a color-coded copy, so you can just take a look at it and put it there in your spot. And this just says that pursuant to Senate Bill 658, mask requirements will only be implemented if the governor declares a state of emergency or if the K County Health Department determines there is spread within the schools, except on school buses and school vehicles with more than one person in them. Now, I did put this statement in there, we talked about it. If student or staff percentages of isolations or quarantine are high, are high, there could be an intermittent closure at any site by BOE approval only. However, the superintendent, in conjunction with K County Health Department, may make the determination a class needs to quarantine based on exposure. If you remember last year, sometimes we would just have to close a class because of exposure, especially in an elementary classroom, and you all gave me the authority to do that. So these are the protocols that we talked about. Green level, very minute new cases. This is the number of average new daily cases per 100,000 capita in K County. So if it's less than 1.43, it is the green risk level. We are welcoming masks. They're not required, except on school buses through that magic date or whatever that date changes to. The typical school day and school-related activities will be followed with no procedural changes. However, we will utilize those five key prevention strategies. Distancing, hand washing, maintaining and cleaning facilities, quarantining, and working with the K County Health Department. Nothing changes between the green risk and the yellow risk, except the span is broader. Then when we get to the orange risk, it changes quite a bit. If the governor, orange level one, there's two levels to orange. If the governor declares a state of emergency or a recommendation by the K County Health Department, we are proposing that we will have mask zones. We can't even have mask zones unless the governor says we're in a state of emergency or if the K County Health Department recommends. So mask zones would include our hallways, our common areas, large group settings, assemblies in the gymnasiums. Now, staggered lunch schedules and passing times may be implemented. We're not going to hold too hard, fast rules. Masks will be recommended in the classroom, but will be required on buses and school vehicles. And that says pending attorney info, I should take that off. It's a go. We, masks are going to be required. The second bullet on orange level one is visitors, use of facility, and capacity limits at public events may be restricted. Now, when we get to orange level two, I only put the changes in bold print. If the governor or the K County Health Department do their thing, masks will be required in all settings. Staggered schedules and passing times may be implemented. As far as safety protocols, public events, travel, and additional safety protocols may be implemented. And then participation in extracurricular activities may be restricted or suspended. Extracurricular changes require BOE approval. Then when we get to the red risk zone, nothing changes, except the final bullet. Distance learning may be implemented by BOE approval. But that still gives me the authority to work with the K County Health Department if we need to quarantine a classroom. Any questions about the chart? We went over it in committee, so. This is required, and I will let you read this, for our American Relief Plan, how we will modify our facilities for social distancing. And then we may do some facility modification, which we've discussed through our CARES dollars. And I will let you take a look at those, see if you have any questions. This is required by the federal government. We talk about how we train our kids for hand washing and respiratory etiquette. I will let you read that. And then we've talked about the, it's Nanoed alcohol-free hand sanitizer is going to be available. It's the NASA technology that was purchased with our Casper units. And then we will have hand sanitizing stations in every classroom. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation. It's required through ARP. This talks about what we will do. It discusses the Casper compact units that will be available in every single classroom. And we have one back here working, which will take care of all kinds of bacteria, including flu, strep, staph, and mold, to reduce and prevent health issues. And I think Kristi's going to do a press release about our Casper units and it's Nanoed soon. And then we will have the barrier surface protection. And then it will be ongoing, replacing our filters and ventilation so that we have optimal health and safety for students.
Are all those units in?
Pretty much all in. I recommend you some are still working on, but they've got to spend all of them.
Need like 500 of them? 400?
Okay, this is long. I'm going to give it to you in a nutshell. It's required in our plan. It's how we will contact trace and how we will work in conjunction with the K County Health Department. We, oftentimes, I knew information before our local health department did, because our superintendent's group met every week with Superintendent Hoffmeister. And typically, she had someone at her meeting from the Oklahoma State Department of Health. We monitor our COVID levels weekly. We report those to the public weekly. If we do have a positive case, we keep a contact tracing spreadsheet that is live and up-to-date on our website, so anybody can look at it at any given time. We've developed joint communication with the K County Health Department, because we do the contact tracing, they issue the isolations and quarantines. Now, I'll remind you of the trigger. It didn't change to determine close contacts. It is defined as exposure to a confirmed positive infected person for less than six feet for 15 minutes or more. If K County Health Department determines close contact has occurred, a 10-day quarantine is imminent, unless the close contact is fully vaccinated. I also heard from Dr. Dearing from COSA that she heard, when she was at her federal meeting in Washington DC, that trials are underway for vaccinations for students six and older, but they will not be available till mid to late winter. So we will not get to start with that when back to school starts. So diagnostic and screening test?
Back up a minute.
Okay.
How are you going to tell if somebody's fully vaccinated?
Well, we have the records for staff. We cannot use passports. They don't have to turn in paperwork, but we won't ask for it unless they become a close contact. Here's the thing, we arrange for our staff to be vaccinated. Our students, our nurses, and our principals can look on OSIS. It's the State Vaccination Reporting Guide. And for a student, it will be on OSIS.
So we're going to take their word for it, or are you going to look them up?
Oh, we'll have to look it up. But it's real easy. We don't have, they don't have to present their card to us. We can look up any vaccinations we need to on OSIS at any given time. Now, for accreditation, there are certain, we have to have their shot records maintained on file. So you'll see when we talk about registration that they have to bring their immunization card.
So staff's the same way? You've got records on them?
We don't have records, but unless they're a close contact, we won't ask for them. But I maintain a spreadsheet on our staff, yes. But we have a lot of new staff coming in. Part of our orientation process is, we don't ask for their card. We ask if they're vaccinated or if they need support getting vaccination. And White Eagle and K County Health Department will work with us on that.
Well, if they say they're vaccinated, you assume they are?
If we assume they are, unless they're a close contact, then they're going to have to prove it. But through Senate Bill 658, we cannot ask for paper. Okay, we do have to offer screening. So we have a direct line with White Eagle and K County Health Department. And all we have to do is say we have somebody that's presenting symptoms, and we will send them either to White Eagle or K County Health Department. They will meet them out in the parking lot and do a test for free. So that's part of our ARP plan that has to be in there. We also have to talk about our vaccine efforts for the school community. And you guys know our partners that worked with us, K County Health Department, White Eagle, Philip 66, and I've heard from all of them again. If a booster is required, they will work with us. So it's not an issue. And Amy Wehut was in our ARP meeting that was required. And she said, you don't even have to get on the portal anymore. They're just so easy to come by. But we will continue to work with them. We have to have coordination with state and local health officials. I've already talked to you about that. We've developed communication, joint communication, that comes from K County Health Department and Ponca City Public Schools. And we, I meet with state epidemiologists and all kinds of health department people weekly, thanks to Joy Hoffmeister. Learning plans. If an intermittent closure occurs, we will automatically transition to distance learning. We will provide a device and internet for any family who may not have access. Again, the assignments will be through Google Classroom, and we will practice in our classrooms, so that our teachers understand the process. Now, it started out a little shaky, and our teachers got a lot better across the state with the distance learning as the year progressed. But we did have a lot of new staff members, so we'll have to work with our new staff members, too, on Google Classroom. We have to provide appropriate accommodations for students with disabilities for intermittent closure, and we want to. It's not ideal for our students with disabilities to participate in all remote learning. So they do have the option to come in and meet with teachers if it's specified in their IEP contingency plans or if their IEP team determines that. We've used COVID relief funds to purchase some task boxes of hands-on manipulatives for students with disabilities if we do go into quarantine again or intermittent closure. And then we've purchased additional PPE for our staff who work with students with disabilities. Protective screens, face shields, gowns, rubber gloves, you name it, we have it. Masks with clear panels. This is just so our parents will know. Unless an emergency is ordered by the governor or we get into the orange level risk, we're going to have regular schedules. Regular lunch schedules. Parents, guests, and visitors will be allowed in the buildings. Face-to-face parent-teacher conferences will resume. However, now that we know we can do it, we will make arrangements for any parent that cannot come to conferences because of compromised health or whatever, or if they're in isolation or quarantine. Field trips and travel, and you've probably seen those come through many of our documents, will continue as long as we're in green and yellow. And then we will continue with community use of facilities. You know, we suspended that last year. We'll go back to all regular activities, assemblies, class meetings, live staff meetings, and live administrative council meetings. You miss a lot if, when you're meeting virtually. You miss those watercooler conversations, where you can just problem solve when you're face-to-face. Of course, we will still order, offer grab-and-go lunches should we go into intermittent closure. And this is for all kids, not just Ponca City Public School kids, 18 and under. They don't have to be present in a vehicle, they can walk up. But names of students, are those still going to be required? Okay, there we go. Mentioned that, and I just threw this in there, that through 2122, all meals are still going to be free to all students, whether we're in-person or distance learning. So this is just for our parents, ways they can help. Don't send your child to school if they have a fever over 100. Cooperate with the K County Health Department if they need to quarantine or isolate. And we ask our parents to be upfront and honest with us as we go through contact tracing, so that we don't, we ensure we don't have spread in the school. We are going to offer PCVA for our students in K through 12 next year. Basically, it will still be through edgenuity, and they will be participating online. We still have some teachers. We're just going to have one elementary, is that correct? One middle school, and just a couple of secondary teachers. We started out with 608 when schools started last year in PCVA. And I think we ended the year with 235, is that about right? Something like that. And we're going to offer even on a more limited basis this year. We're going to allow about 125. If they were successful with PCVA last year, then they have to apply again. And of course, if we have a vulnerable student, that will take precedent for them getting into PCVA. Did you have, in-person registration started today? Did you have anybody for PCVA?
Yes, not many.
Okay, there you go. This is required, how we will respond to student academic needs. And I have shared this with you already, if you want to glance through it. And if you have any questions. You know, we did summer school, all summer, for K through 5, first time in a long time, and 7th and 8th, and then juniors and seniors, credit recovery. And we'll continue on through the school year. This is required in our plan, how we will address our English language learners, our students experiencing homelessness or in foster care, and our students with disabilities. And I'll let you read that. One thing that we will do is we will enroll homeless, foster, or migratory students with or without records. We want those kids in school. Part of the plan is our response to social, emotional, and mental health needs. And we think it's going to do a lot of good just to have those face-to-face interactions. Our goals for this year are going to be focusing on positive relationships, not only with students to staff, staff to students, staff to staff, students to community, and staff to community. And we have some initiatives that we have set out in place for this goal. Without a doubt, academics, there are gaps in our academics, but we will accomplish nothing with closing those academic gaps if we don't have a positive relationship with our students. And we're going to start promoting PCPS and Ponca City in general as the best. And we'll talk to you more about our new little twist on our cultural goals. We will have mentorships with all students. We will assign kids to every employee that we have. They notice if they're not at school, hey, we missed you, where were you? It's just focusing on those relationships. And in fact, part of TLE, we have to have a PL focus, that is a professional learning focus. Everybody's PL focus is going to be on building relationships. If that's going to be our goal, that's going to be our focus, even if they are a master at building relationships. We'll do a lot of celebrating student success. And we've got a lot of new ideas out there. And our site leadership are coming up with some great strategies. And we'll still have community partnerships with the Ponca City Police Department and mental health professionals. We will respond to social, emotional, and mental health needs for our English language learners and our students experiencing homelessness as well. And you can see what we'll do there. We also have to have part of our plan, how we respond to social, emotional, and mental health needs for our staff. Again, focusing on positive relationships and culture. Again, focusing on positive relationships and culture, talking to each other, knowing a bit about each other. We'll have a big focus on self-care. One thing that'll make a big difference is returning to in-person meetings and team-building events. And if one principal told me this, all of them did. It was hard on our staff when they had to eat in four corners, when they couldn't come together and eat meals together. So that's, that's therapeutic in and of itself. We are human beings and we all need those, we all need camaraderie. Now, I will tell you that some of our kids, and I've told you this before, were successful with PCVA. And those that were, were typically the introverts. They didn't mind learning and studying on their own. But that's typically not how it is with most humans. We will do strengths-based leadership training with our secondary principals. And then something that's going to be really good on our professional development day on November 12th is Tina Buggren is coming from Solution Tree. She's an excellent renowned trainer. She's not coming, it's virtual, on cultivating mindfulness. So we're really excited about that. And that will help our teachers. And then our teachers can implement some of those strategies in the classroom as well. Then this is just the end of the plan. Please feel free to call us with questions. So we are looking forward to a more normal year. And in fact, I told our staff that normal's not going to cut it for us. It's going to have to be better than normal. We can't expect different results unless we change our ways. So second part, any, any questions about the return to learn plan? It is an agenda item for your consideration for approval coming up. You, you have probably heard that on July, oh, I've got an extra digit in there in my, my title. Sorry about that. Yeah, that's a, that's a ways away. Okay, on July 12th, 2021, the State Department of Education adopted temporary emergency rules for House Bill 1775. And I'll talk to you about that. House Bill 1775 addresses a controversial topic called critical race theory. CRT is a way about, thinking about America's history through the lens of race or sex discrimination. And it was actually developed in the 1970s and 80s in response to what scholars believed was a lack of racial progress following the civil legislation of the 60s. The discussion on this theory has become more prevalent as of late due to recent and national, recent national civil unrest. So let me tell you what House Bill 1775 does, and it was signed by the governor. It prohibits teaching that one race or sex is inherently superior to another and that anyone by virtue of their race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. House Bill 1775 prohibits Oklahoma public schools, colleges, and universities from incorporating messages that promote or encourage race and sex discrimination in any course instruction. It also ensures that students are not characterized, classified, categorically assigned, characteristic, or shamed based solely on their race or sex. It also prohibits state higher education institutions from requiring mandatory gender or sexual diversity training or counseling. So that's what it does. So here, here's a question that a lot of people ask, is critical race theory being taught in schools? There's little to no evidence that critical race theory itself is being taught to K through 12 public school students, though some ideas that may be central to it, such as lingering consequences of slavery, may have been in some schools across the nation. Now, if our teachers focus on the Oklahoma academic standards, CRT is not an issue. In Oklahoma, educators teach content in history, social studies, ELA, biology, or any other subject matter consistent with the Oklahoma academic standards. OAS do not include CRT ideals. However, in Oklahoma, through our, our work that we've done on curriculum mapping and curriculum training, our, our teachers are skilled at leading and facilitating important conversations on difficult topics, including race or gender. So those conversations occur, but the, the ideal is that there's not one race or not one sex that is superior. So, so what 1775 does not do, it does not stop the teaching of history or anything currently in Oklahoma education standards, including curriculum that shows historical examples of racism or genocide. Teachers will still be able to teach about slavery in America, the Holocaust, the Tulsa Race Massacre, and other topics. And according to our Oklahoma academic standards, students also can discuss these events and their true feelings about them as detailed in OAS. Now, why did we need emergency rules? Teachers need clear guidelines to start this school year to clear up any confusion that they may have regarding the passage of House Bill 1775. So it's just reinforcement to our teachers that gives them confidence to continue teaching as they have been since the Oklahoma academic standards were adopted. Now, I'm not going to read all these to you, but here are the general prohibitions of the emergency guidelines. And I listed all of them because those, there are eight discriminatory principles that schools cannot be involved with. And I'll let you read through those. Okay, here are some of the specific prohibitions to ensure compliance. We are prohibited from sponsoring courses, adopting curriculum, textbooks, or any other instructional tool using money or properties that violate the guidelines set forth by the emergency rules. I paraphrase that, there is a long list of guidelines. Parents have the right to inspect curriculum, but that's already law. They can do that already. The State Board of Education is prohibited from mandating standards or rules violating these prohibitions. And we must develop a process to receive complaints and assign this duty to one employee. It has been assigned to Delanna Hawkins. So she is that one employee. And we've looked at some forms. The complaints have to be written in writing and then they'll go to Delanna. And she's in curriculum and a lot of these topics will come up mostly in secondary curriculum, although we do teach history in, in elementary school as well. So some of the consequences that we can have if we fail to comply is that we can have deficiencies imposed and we could eventually become non-accredited. Individual teachers refusing to comply can have their certification revoked. I do not foresee this being a problem, so. Any questions there? Okay, just wanted to get that out front. And, and I provided, OSSBA, our organizations come up with some general guidelines that are in much easier terms than the, the State Department's guidelines with the legalese. So Delanna and Terry have those to share out with principals. And we'll talk about it in Ad Council as well. But we just want to reassure our teachers that they can teach the OAS standards and not be violating the prohibitions set forth by the guidelines. Questions there? Last part of the report is our staffing report. And I told you last time that we had 14 more, 1,400 more teachers retire in May of 2021 for May of 2020. What you don't know is, the first of July, we had an additional 1,000 Oklahoma teachers retire in June alone. So that's 2,400 more than last year. And we're already in a teacher shortage, so we're trying to fill those 2,400 positions vacated by retirees, plus people who leave the profession or move. And there are still hundreds of teaching positions posted on everybody's website. I follow our peer 6A schools. And Stillwater posted a, a slide Sunday and they needed about five or six more teachers.
How many total teachers are there in the state?
Oh, I used to know that number. I don't know.
So that 2,400?
22,000, maybe?
How many?
Maybe 22,000. I could be wrong. I can't, Zach, do you know?
I think it's more than that, but it's not. I don't think it's more than 50,000.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Just trying to figure what percent retired?
Can you do that math that fast? A good number.
I know that more people retired than are graduating from education programs.
Oh, by leaps and bounds. High percentage.
You got the end of your three-year pay raise. I mean, that's what it was.
And again, we expected that, but coupled with COVID and the issues that we faced in the last few years, hey, they didn't have to think too long about it. But there have been some laws put into place that allow our retired teachers to come back. And we've had several retired teachers come back.
It's not always just about money either, though, Robin. Like, teachers take a huge hit with the public. They're, they're responsible for when things go good and they're responsible when things go bad. So, you know, after the way that things have gone, I'm not surprised that some of them left. The way that people have been talking to them is just, but I'm, I'm ready for them to come back. You know, I'm hoping.
Me too. Well, here's some good news. All of our elementary positions are filled as of this 10 seconds. And here's what we lack not being filled. We need an English teacher at the high school. And there was an interview today. And I haven't heard from Mr. Dent yet, so I'm sure it was great. We need an athletic trainer. And we have not had one applicant. And I have scrounged for anybody who might, I, I think that we might could get certified. And it, it's a process to be certified as an athletic trainer. So that's all we have. So when Stillwater's slide came out yesterday, I was like, boom. We've been pretty good. So of, well, here's, here's our total. We, oh, we don't have five openings. We have two openings. Sorry, I didn't change that. We've had 59 new hires. Now, really, that seems extensive, but we have added some new positions. 5.4 counselors, one dean of students, two reading teachers at West Middle School, one executive director of operations intern, he's temporary, and 2.1 elementary interventionist. So that's 11.2. We reinstated the instructional coach at West Middle School, so 12.5. So subtract 12.5 from 59 new hires and that's like only 47.5. And last year, we hired more than that. We closed a couple of positions due to class size. We closed a section of fourth grade at Roosevelt and a section of third grade at Trout. So we added 10 and a half new positions, so 40, 48 and a half new teachers. And that's pretty typical for us. It seems like a bad year. And I'll tell you why it seems like a bad year, is because there are no teachers in the pipeline. So it seems like there were more. It was just harder to fill. Boy, this was a big thing for us. We had 11 administrative changes. And the most I can remember is three or four in the last 10, 15 years. These were all due to changes, status, resignation, or retirement. We're adding a dean of students at Poe High and executive director of operations intern. So technically, just nine administrative changes because we added those two positions. Of our administrators, six were internal, four were external, and one is returning. And that's it. Unless you have any questions.
I think we're okay. Everybody okay? I'm blind again. Okay. Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. Consider and take action on the return to learn.
No, we have, yeah. You go to number five?
Yeah, yes. Okay. Consider and take action on return to learn plan. The Ponca City Public School return to learn plan is a set of recommendations developed in collaboration with the American Relief Plan Committee to create an in-person traditional learning environment with layers of safeguards embedded to protect our students, family, and staff.
Do you approve them?
Call for the vote. Mrs. Zemerschek?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda, agenda with commentary, minutes from June 14th, 2021, special board meeting, hearing, meeting, or budget hearing meeting and regular board meeting, and then contracts and agreements under $10,000. Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed or amended.
I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Judy. Call for the vote. Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemerschek?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay. We have, number seven is action items. We have consider and take action of the following district financial reports. We have budget amendments. We have child nutrition fund for 15515. We have budget analysis reports, bond fund reports, building fund. We also have booster club fundraiser requests, activity fund, budget reports, treasures reports, and we have just a lot of reports, so.
Good meeting.
We reviewed over those?
Robin.
Yes, they were reviewed.
I don't think there's ever going to get out of there. Robin has so many questions.
Were they all answered, Robin?
Was there anything that you just really want to bring to us that you didn't like?
Is there anything you could share from that meeting?
No, I was.
Always good.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve number seven.
Oh, wow. Okay. A through S.
Yep.
Okay. Call for the vote. Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Okay. Number two, consider and take action on adopting a school hour policy for the 2021, 2022 school year. By adopting a school hour policy, the district has options to calculate the school year based on hours rather than days. And we have to do a special letter and have that signed. If we have any questions, Ms. Shelley?
We do this every year and that gives us some flexibility. Should we have a snow day, we can go by hours.
I'll make a motion here for number two.
1080.
Yes, correct.
I'll second that.
Judy. Call for the vote. Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemerschek?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Okay. Number three, consider and take action on appointing an internal activities review committee for activity absence for the year of 21, 22 school year. Accreditation standards state the maximum number of absence of activities which removes any student from the classroom shall be 10 days for any of, any one class period of each year. And the district has a committee in place that consists of the high school principal and athletic director.
Is this something that's done every year?
Yes, done every year. And, and the committee can, some exclusions are if we play at a state or national level. You know, we're, we're going to allow more than 10 days, so. But the committee reviews and makes that recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
I need a second, please.
Number three.
I'll second.
Call for the vote. Mrs. Zemerschek?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Okay. And number four, consider and take action on the following contracts slash agreements. Okay, agreement with Aspen Custom Electronics. It's for a projector and screen at Washington Pre-K. The cost is $18,568.48, and it comes out of the SR2 funds.
They do not have a PTA and this allows, they, they do their own PE, art, and music, and this allows them to, some flexibility to do these in the classroom and so that they're all not combined in one room. And that's allowable for distancing.
No PTA?
No, they're just there for a year.
Here for a year, okay, okay. That makes sense, okay. A B, agreement with CDWG for Go Guardian Teacher Bundle for online monitoring. This allows teachers to monitor, monitor student activities while, while online. The cost is $39,375. And this is also with a 4,500 one-year license for the physical year of 2022. And this is also going to be paid with the SR, oh, SR3 funds.
This is to keep our students safe if they're quarantined or isolated for online learning. We've had it at the secondary level before. It's been paid out of Title IV, is that right? And we were going to do that out of all of it, elementary and secondary out of Title IV, but there wasn't enough money. But that's one of the requirements of our American Relief Plan, keep our students safe. And I'm telling you, we, we saved some students with it just this past year, so.
Okay.
I have a question for Brett on A. Was that one or screen, projector and screen?
Yes.
Okay.
They have to rewire. It's a lot of work. That's.
Okay. C, agreement with city of, city of Ponca City for the use of the Rexplex pool and aquatics facility. And this agreement covers the use of the pool and aquatics facility for swimming instruction, special education aquatic program, and swimming for athletics, athletic sport. The cost of the agreement is $1,250 per month, so the total is $15,000. And this is from July 1st, 21 to June 30th, 2022.
I have a question on that. Why do we have that for a full year?
We just pay for it monthly. It's $15,000 for, well, we do have special ed students that use it year-round. And then we have second, second graders that go year-round too. That we do swim.
Second graders wouldn't be going in the summertime.
No. But we do use their pool year-round. I mean.
Does the swim club use it? And I think the swim club might use it in the summer for training, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's a swim club, they're, they don't belong to us. Oh, they don't, huh? We just pay it in twelve months, it's kind of like we pay our teacher.
They just broke it out into twelve fifty-nine.
Yeah, it's just paid in twelve months.
They just pay a monthly fee.
We really don't use it twelve months, we just pay fifteen thousand for the year.
Kind of like how we pay our teachers. They don't work twelve months, but we pay them for twelve months, so they will have some money. Yep.
Okay. Okay, agreement with the City of Ponca City for school resource officers for the year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. And this agreement is for two school resource officers, one officer is located at the high school, the other one at West, and the other, and this one rotates with the middle school. And the district will reimburse the city one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and fifty-five.
One oh seven.
I'm sorry.
One thousand seven.
One thousand seven fifty-five.
One hundred seven, sorry.
One hundred and seven thousand dollars. Sorry, and this is from August eighteenth through May twentieth. And he's like, just like Mr. Kincaid out there, he's, that's part of the job right here as well, or no?
No, this is extra duty. This, this pay is for the.
Just the schools, okay.
But it went down about fifteen thousand, didn't it?
The rank of the officer dictates the cost, and those officers who are a little higher ranked.
We had a sergeant last, last year, and they prorate. If we're, if we're on full distance learning, they prorate. Give us that credit back.
So, it's basically a pass-through cost.
Correct.
So, how do you share? If something happens at West, do you go to East or just at certain ti- okay, okay. Not certain hours, just if something happens, okay.
No, and they are busy.
Okay.
We have two new resource officers, just as interest. We met with Captain Jeffries, who is now going to be the resource officer supervisor, and Officer Kincaid is out there, he's going to be one of our new resource officers. They've been to training, we're going to meet with our secondary principals and make sure we understand the line between school board policy and law enforcement policies. It's always good to do, and with two new ones and a new supervisor, we're going to do that on August second, I think, maybe?
Okay. E, agreement with growing leaders for leadership software for East Middle School and West Middle School and Poe High. The agreement is for three habitudes online subscription for EMS, West and the Poe High, and it's, it's a curriculum focused on leadership, and that's a ten thousand three hundred and eighty fee, and it's paid out of S R three funds.
And this qualifies for our social emotional learning training, and next year it is going to be a requirement through Maria's Law, and I can't remember the House bill on Maria's Law, but we do have to have social emotional learning in the schools, and we want it. Our kids, our kids need some recovery, and it's just good. Habitudes is fabulous. If you'll remember, you approved paths maybe a month or two ago, and it was only elementary curriculum, so this is focused on secondary.
Okay. F, agreement with Kildare Public School to provide special education service. Ponca City Public School will provide education service for one Kildare Public School student who will be enrolled as a student in PCPS. The cost is nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and nineteen cents for the physical year of two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two.
What grade is this student? What level?
Elementary.
Elementary? Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, does Kildare have high school?
Yeah.
They, they don't have the staff or the means to provide the services, so we contract with them, and we provide the services, and they pay us the state aid.
And they just have one student? This is for one student?
Does the teacher drive there? Pardon me? Does the teacher drive there?
No, they come to us.
They come to you?
Okay. They're our student.
Oh, they come, huh?
And, and that's just with Kildare. We've done it before with like Scheidler or McCord, or if they don't have services.
I see, I was thinking that just for the, for just for the services, but they do the entire enrollment, because they can't provide what they need, then they come.
Correct, for just one student.
For one student, okay.
Okay. Okay, agreement with powers of Oklahoma for East Middle School HVAC software and control panels. It's the power of Oklahoma will provide labor and equipment to rewire, install, energy management control software to all East Middle School HVAC units and control panels, as well as install new weatherproof connections. The total is ten thousand five hundred.
Not the software, though. We're not taking the software as part of the quote, we're not doing the software. It's rewiring the system because it's not software. It's not supposed to be. It was the quote, it got stolen in here, but that's not getting, not being software.
Okay.
So, just the control panels?
And the rewiring?
Panels to the units. We had issues with the wiring from anybody in the year, so we're rewiring all components to start.
Okay. Okay. H, agreement with tailored therapy for licensed physical therapist. Tailored therapy will provide a licensed physical therapist for physical therapy service for students enrolled in Ponca City Public Schools, and the cost is eighty-one thousand dollars.
We don't have a physical therapist, and we have a lot of students that require that service by law.
And they just go through school, go to each school? Okay. I, agreement with Telecom Holdings for replacing and adding cameras to school sites. This product will be replacing additional cameras to the elementary schools, East, West, and the Poe High. The cost is a lot, one hundred and three thousand one hundred and seventy-five to be paid for S R two funds. But that's good, I mean, you need that.
And, and we, that qualifies through S R, we can use cameras for contact tracing, and, and we, we replace some cameras at the secondary school, but our outside cameras at the elementary are not too effective. Non-existent.
Okay.
Forget the effective, huh?
Okay. J, agreement with Tarifera for West Middle School Chromebook cases. It's five hundred and fifty Chromebook cases for West Middle School, fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty, and these are just cases that cover the Chromebooks.
This is for the refresh, Chromebook refresh, that we, we didn't get the cases on there erroneously, but hey, we got it taken care of.
Okay. Okay. K, agreement with United Community Action Program Head Start for early childhood services. And this is, the services cost is two thousand two hundred per student for maximum of twenty children for a total of forty-four thousand dollars. Reimbursed is based on enrollment in October first, two thousand twenty-one.
The cost went up quite a bit. Last year, there were only twelve Head Start students. We typically contract for twenty, and, and I'm really going to do some investigating on this and why we offer this. This was began, was, was offered before pre-K was compulsory. They provide transportation, which we don't, and they will have before-school and after-school daycare that's prorated based on the family's income, so it's a service to, to our families too, and, and us as well, so we get more kids in school and.
Okay, and so.
We don't, we don't get dollars for these being pre-K, do we?
It's twenty-two hundred per student, so we get a little.
That's our cost, but we don't get reimbursed by the state for these, do we?
Yeah, no, they follow our calendar and our standards, but no.
But we don't get reimbursed.
They're not ours, so that's why I want to investigate that. Now, you know, now that pre-K is compulsory, and I think it's been done, how many years did we sign, Betty, twenty-one years?
I have to look back.
Yeah, it's been a long time. You know, we can't provide some of the services that Head Start can, we can't provide transportation because it's legal for pre-k'ers, and, and then we don't have before-school daycare, and some of our working parents need that, and they can also get prorated costs on their childcare through Head Start.
I used Head Start. It was critical for me at the time. I needed it, and it was important. And they also, they do those things with the little kids, too. They taught my kids how to brush their teeth and, you know, do some of those little things that they don't want to do.
Does she approve A through K?
Yes.
That good.
I think that's a, and it started to when we had waiting rooms for pre-K.
Yes, back in the day.
Yeah, and that gave us the opportunity to serve those students if we have them there and serve them there.
That makes a lot of sense, okay.
Call for the vote. Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershee?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Okay. Number five, motion and vote to convey an executive session for the following purpose, to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employee of the personnel on the attached detailed personnel report.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Judy?
Do you have to read the whole thing?
You got to read it, yes.
Did I not read the whole thing?
To discuss.
Okay, okay, there's a lot of parentheses. Okay, to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property, and to discuss confidential conversations with board attorney, I cannot see you guys, sorry. With board attorney. Where did I miss? I'm sorry, guys, okay. To discuss negotiations, to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real, real property, and to discuss confidential conversations with board attorney concerning pending claims and litigations. I need to highlight that as well.
Now make a motion. Have a motion made by Anna Rowland and seconded by.
Me.
It's Trup, okay. Call for the vote. Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershee?[1669.63]